The sooner we get started, maybe the sooner we can all head home once all questions are answered. And what I usually like to do is go around and have everybody introduce themselves and tell us the one thing you want to get out of this meeting tonight. I'll write it down to make sure that we try to do it. I'm Jan Olson, Chair of Planning. And these guys can all start introducing themselves.
I'm John Rauchal, I'm on planning.
He's our map guru, by the way. So we do a lot of, rely on him for mapping.
I'm Melanie Keen, I'm Planer Commission, I'm taking notes tonight. I hope you get some good comments from everybody.
I'm Ben Bayshore, I'm here just to learn as much as I can at this particular event.
I'm Jane English, and I've already said the question that I have. My sense is shoreland should drain into the body of water, not away from it.
Denise Wheeler, Slough North Shore. Here to learn.
Scott Bassett, Citizen. I'm here to try to understand why the town has to deal with this junk and not the state. So I'd expect answers.
Well, I remember this came up when we dealt with it at Curtis Pond. We aligned our zoning regs so they were absolutely in tune with the state. And that went down in flames. They weren't restrictive enough, at least not to the people of Curtis. So that's why we're here looking at another version.
I'm Larry Bush, I live on Bliss Pond, I'm on the Conservation Commission and the Callous Lakes and Streams Committee. I'm sort of here just to report back to my bosses.
Dale Davis, as much as it pains me, I agree with Scott.
Somebody wrote that down.
Hi, I'm Terrence Reed, and this is, for me, this is sort of just first for a understanding of what's going on. I'm a little late for it, actually. I have a specific question, I'm here to just soak up as much information as I can.
We'll give you information. I don't know, we'll see.
I'm Arlen Brookley, Callous resident. Interested in knowing what's different from the state regulations and why there need to be differences between the state regulations.
Bob Martin, and his wife, Woodbury.
Oh geez.
I'm the zoning administrator and lister there.
Oh, good.
My sister wrote the new zoning regs for Cabot.
Did she start from ground zero?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I had it up pretty high because there was only 50 in here when I first walked in, so. You do know that John and I are listers too. So, I mean, planning and listing goes so well together.
And I'm sorry. Yeah, if you're gonna do any enforcement.
Yeah, yeah, well. You don't know what we find as we do inspections as listers.
I've got a story.
Okay.
That's another thing. I'm Susan Martin, this is better half. And I'm here representing the Woodbury Lake Association. I'm its president. And I just would like some information to take back to the members at our spring meeting in June.
Great.
Leslie Fitch, and just wanting to know what the changes are and what actual concerns they're intended to address.
Randy Fitch, email harassment.
Heidi Bowen, I'm the DRB Board Chairman. So I need to know what they're doing.
Well, welcome all. And what we thought we'd do is, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation to kind of like do the overall. John has the maps. And sometimes what we've learned in doing this work is that a map speaks a thousand words. And sometimes by seeing the visual, it's easier to understand what we're doing. So with that... Do I put this forward? Oh, here, I want this. The purpose that we started out, when we started looking at what we have today with shoreland and what we want to accomplish, is basically protect the water habitat around the shoreland and preserve the recreational and scenic resources that we have. So the current regs, and we'll be going through that a little bit, do not at all align with what the state has as state shoreland. So we decided we wanted to have our regulations be more in sync with the state and not be quite so different as they are now. And we have a fair interest in our community to have additional protections to the shoreland above and beyond what the state wants. So what the current regulations do is it applies to all acres, all lakes and ponds that are 20 acres. Right now, we have an 800-foot boundary from mean water mark. Only a 50-foot buffer. The structures have to be 150 feet back. And it requires conditional use for any increase in impervious surface above 10%. We have, our current regulations show that we have a maximum lot coverage of about 10%. And as we learned, there are many noncompliant structures and nonconforming uses around the lake. And if anything is affected by that, it's gonna go to the DRB. Within our current shoreland regulations, you can have a planned unit development on shoreland. You can have, it's a three-acre minimum lot size on your shoreland. You can have single multi-use family dwellings. And with conditional use, you could even build restaurants, bed and breakfast ends, and create impervious surface within 150 feet of the lake. So we have a pretty very, right now, our shoreland is very broad. And no way complies with what the state envisioned. So we've been many months in reviewing all of this. We looked and asked for advice from the Conservation Commission. We've had presentations from the Winuski Woodch- friends, Friends of Winuski River A&amp;R. We've solicited information from shoreland owners. We are great at copying, not copying, but we do read a lot of our neighbors' regulations. And we did look closely at Greensboro, Elmwood, Middlesex, and Facetown because a lot of them had interest. And Elmore. Oh, yeah, Elmore, thank you. Oh, we didn't catch that. And I think probably more important for us, we looked at this on a parcel-by-parcel basis when we were reviewing this with the maps. And that's why it became really important for us to have act or parcel maps. What we learned is that probably 50% of landowners along the lake have parcels that do not comply with the three-acre minimum at all. So 50% of the property owners around the lake are in nonconforming lots.
Which lake are we talking about, Nelson?
I'm talking about all lakes in general.
Johnson.
All the lakes in general. And we're, tonight, yeah, we're focusing on number 10, Nelson and Saban or Woodbury. But it was true at Curtis, at Bliss, well Bliss not so much, and Adamant. And we'll kind of talk a little bit about Adamant in that way.
So they're nonconforming now?
And they won't be conforming ever.
Well, but they were conforming at one point, right? Says who?
Before zoning, I mean, they were never really conforming.
Well, of course.
It makes it sound bad.
You didn't have any zoning regs, yes.
All right, all right.
Makes it sound bad.
Get your point out, yes.
It's a pre-existing condition.
Oh, I didn't really want that up. But it kind of shows, this was an old map that we used to look at the boundary of Nelson Pond. And all these little, you know, the little tiny lots that are there, those are pretty much all nonconforming. Here's Saban Pond. And the purple on that is the shoreland area. And the green is rural residential. So it just gives you an idea. So what we thought we would do in proposing a shoreland overlay district, which we call the Sherrod. I thought that was a fish.
It sounds aquatic.
Oh, is that what it is? We're gonna call it that, parcels that are near the lake, it's gonna be just this. It's gonna be an overlay district. And then what's gonna happen is if you live in a parcel that is village district, your underlying district will be village. If you live on a parcel that is rural residential, your underlying district will be rural residential. We have a few that are resource recreational.
So they would have two?
Everybody, yes, you have two now Denise.
I do.
You have two, you are in shoreland and you are in rural residential. You don't know it, but you are.
I didn't know that. I knew rural residential.
But you also, for some reason, because of the 800-foot shoreland, you're in that district, in shoreland district as well.
I didn't know that.
So the stricter of the two applies, even if it's village, it has to be three acres?
No, we're gonna cover, we're gonna cover that. We're gonna cover that.
That's weird.
I mean, that's one of the issues we want to hear from you. Because, yeah, and we'll cover that. When you see the map, you'll see it better. And the stricter of the two districts would apply. But in terms of it being an overlay, it's just an overlay of what is there. So we want to apply State Shoreland Protection Act standards, which will be the same. We don't really want to duplicate what the shoreland is doing. If there's any development and there is not a shoreland permit, then the owner should comply with the Callous Shoreland Overlay District. It now applies to 10-acre lakes. Remember when I said our current applies to 20 acres? Now the Shoreland Overlay District will cover all 10-acre lakes. So we added new lakes. Adamant Pond became added. They'd never before had been under shoreland. They are now gonna have Shoreland Overlay. Little Mud Pond, Sodan Pond, and Watson Pond have been added.
Where's Watson?
Up on County Road, kind of that area, north of Mayfair.
Jan, the state standard, it's our 10 acres, now that's part of one. So getting it from 20 to 10 is in part conforming with the state.
We're complying with the state, we're being consistent with the state.
I'm trying to catch up with Woodbury because we have so many lakes.
This is the standard state diagram that the state uses to show a 100-foot buffer. So we're gonna go from a 50-foot buffer in our overlay to a 100-foot buffer, which is state. And then the 150 feet that goes beyond that, so the total shoreland overlay district will be 250 feet from mean water mark.
And what is it now, 150?
No, 800 feet.
Well, it's actually just three pieces for what we have now. There's a managed buffer area of 50 feet, there's a no-build zone of 150 feet, then the edge of the shoreland district, and it's a district, not an overlay. The edge of the district is 800 feet.
So the two areas where we are gonna differ from the state is impervious surface. The state's requirement is 20% impervious surface. We have for years had 10% impervious surface, and we're gonna keep the Callous 10%. We know that there are some people who would prefer that we stick with the state, but we also have a lot of people in our town that would prefer that we stick with the 10%. So right now, our proposed regulations would be to be an impervious surface of 10%.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said the state's was. 20.
20.
So just out of quick curiosity about the impervious surface. It seems like a huge amount of impervious surface that actually is near and in the lake. So I'm thinking of our public roads and our fishing access. I mean, the roads themselves.
Well, that's the next thing that will.
Are huge.
Yeah, and that's our next thing. The state and their shoreland at roads, we are not. We are covering, our shoreland overlay district will include the roads. So if a property owner has land that's across the road, like there is around, there's a lot of road on number 10. We have a lot of roads that are right up to the lake. The state shoreland ends at the road. We're gonna expand, if that 250 feet of shoreland overlay goes over the road, then we want best management practice. Relying on Melanie to keep my language accurate. We want best vegetative management practices that the state requires to be on that side of the road as well. So we want to instill the idea of best management, vegetative management practices for our shoreland overlay that will go on either side of the road. If the shoreland overlay, that 250-foot mark, is over the road.
You want to be careful how you define your roads. I was talking to an attorney from Fort Myers today that went to the Supreme Court on the case.
Fort Myers, Florida?
Florida. And this is a piece of property where this is, I'm the budding owner. Does not want that to happen. It hasn't gone into environmental court yet, but I think it's going to. And it's gonna come down to, well, is this right-of-way a public road use? And Supreme Court says, yeah, it is. It's not really going to our thinking. It's right-of-way to somebody's camp. But the Supreme Court says, nope, it's a, it's public, considered public. So your shoreline stop, this was like 70 feet. 20-foot right-of-way, and a .3-acre parcel that you're gonna put up a big house on.
Well.
Denise, we're not far off.
Yeah.
This is here, where? Oh, it's here?
Yep.
Because last time you were repaid taxes to sell the road, depending on.
I think it's interesting because the state has started to instill new road requirements as well.
Well, that's actually what I was wondering earlier, if it isn't a thing that modified the roads.
Yeah, the last state planning meeting that I attended, they had a lot of information about what they were gonna have the roads be. And right-of-way, I, with our lister mapping, I'm real touchy on what the right-of-ways are. It's kind of a problem. We have surveys that take out the right-of-way and reduce the land based on right-of-way. So, I mean, it's a total gray area to me.
This particular case is really interesting because usually the parcel that somebody wants to build their summer, their year-round on, can be adjacent to and attached to the shoreline lot. This one isn't. It's like a little island, two little pieces. And it's a grandfather contiguous lot.
I think it'd go to our DRB. Okay, I think that's all I had, actually. So you can go to your hands.
You just added a bullet, I'd like you to.
Oh, this one. Strict regulation of nonconforming lots and uses of nonconforming structures. We have current regulations which we're gonna keep on how, if there's a noncompliant structure within the 250-foot shoreland overlay, and you decide that you, if somebody says, I'm gonna add a deck, we're gonna have to go to the state anyway. And assuming that we get a state permit, I doubt that anything's gonna be happening here. But our reg stay, it still has to go to our DRB. Because any nonconforming change, whether vertical, horizontal, or whatever, goes to the DRB for noncompliant buildings and lots. So we're keeping that the same, and that's basically what that last bullet point is.
And that's as it is now?
And that's as it is now.
I wondered, like too much, if somebody's gonna do something on the shoreline, do you require them to get the state shoreline permit before you guys do anything?
So the administrator does.
They have to, there's no, the town can't exempt anyone from state.
No, what I mean is they'll come, like, they come to me for permits, and they haven't gotten their state shoreline yet.
We have, we ask them to go.
I'm zoning administrator, and if a person needs a state permit, I tell them, and it has to go to the DRB. They get that together before you go to the DRB.
So now we're gonna turn it over to John, where he's got a series of maps. And we'll kind of talk it through.
Okay, focused right now on the bottom of number 10. These are the existing conditions. The blue is obviously the water. This darker green is the 50-foot vegetative buffer that we currently have in our rigs. This boundary of the green, this is 150 feet from the water. And that's basically the no-build zone. And then from here to the edge, that represents the, our shoreland district. It's not an overlay district, it's a solid district with its own standards. It has a three-acre minimum. It has a 10%, a 10% maximum development area, whether it's clearing or impervious surface. And because it's a real district and not an overlay, a budding district, this yellowish kind of thing, this is rural residential, it stops at exactly the point where the shoreline picks up. The same's true of this crosshatch reddish area. This is a village district.
That's North Calis.
That's North Calis Village District.
And most of the villages in there.
So if we look at that, that's village, which has no minimum acreage requirement.
Yeah, no minimum lot size, 68 feet of frontage, 10-foot side setbacks.
You move up to the green, which is our shoreland district, we have a three-acre minimum.
300-foot frontage.
And then we have, which includes the buffer and the 150 acres. So that's what we have now.
One of the things that's going to happen is we get rid of the entire shoreland district. And the, yeah, let me, we've got a... So there's a village. So what happens to village if we get rid of the shoreland district? And what happens is... Bear with me, I'm trying to find my way through this one. Proposed, okay. Okay, so there, there's the new village.
So what this is showing is the very dark green is the 100-foot buffer. And then combine that with the light green is your 250-foot shoreland overlay.
This district was drawn so that this boundary was 400 feet from the center of the road, North Calis Road. This boundary runs right down the middle of Upper Road. And the two come together at a point here. And so I just took the same 400 feet from North Calis Road, and that's what gave it this ugly shape. But that's village.
And everything else reverts to rural residential. So the question.
The yellow is rural residential.
All the yellow is rural residential.
And that it remains at a three-acre as rural residential. The question is, do the folks who live in the North Calis Village area want to keep this as village with the kind of standards that are in village district? So close to the lake.
But it doesn't drain into the lake.
No, it doesn't. But it drains into the streams.
Yeah.
Everything drains into the stream.
Well, everything drains into the stream somewhere. But most of North Calis Village is below the outlet by a lot. It's a village.
I think it's important for us to remember, there aren't too many villages that are up on the top of hills. Most of our Vermont villages are down, follow the streams, the brooks. That's where our villages are. And I was under the belief that we wanted to encourage our development in our villages and not out in the, we don't want to be encouraging the development and taking up agricultural land and building the houses all over the place. So if we want to encourage the development in our villages, then this is what we need to do. I mean, obviously, you'll have the regulations in place so that they're constructed and done properly.
And it's interesting, in North Calis Village, a lot of that southern part, there's old cellar holes along there, houses that are falling down, but that was quite the village, I guess, at some point.
Right. It has a good history and, yeah, I mean, you had your own dairy there, as I understand, and a cheese factory there, and a few other things that were going on, and a hotel. And it's got a wealth of history, and I look at it now, and it's like, I don't know. The other problem is, a lot of that area has, do we have steep slopes there? The topography is.
I do, it's a kind of contour.
Yeah, so we also have that to kind of consider, but, yeah. So we, this is what we're proposing, is that that village district is that for the North Calis area. Everything else that will remain as rural residential based on what it is now.
Any people like that?
I think it makes sense. I did work with the DRB to do renovation and construction in North Calis Village. How long have I been here? Six years, seven years? How long has she been here? And I found that it worked, you know, it made sense. The DRB was really clear that, you know, that we want to encourage development in the village and not sprawl, as Leslie was saying. And also, you know, in terms of thinking about the, where we were putting in any infrastructure, like figuring out the septic and all that, we complied with the state, and that was fully strict. I mean, it's tough in North Calis Village because everybody's well is really close to everybody's well. It's not easy, but, you know, there are good regulations in place.
I have a question. If somebody's, I noticed on the previous one where you were showing the lot lines, that square that's the Bushway property, a little bit of it's in the village. Does that mean the whole of his property's in the village? Or?
Which property are you talking about?
The square, go up, the square to the left, oop, to the left.
To the left over here?
Yeah, right there, that square, that's Bushways. And so a little bit of it's in shoreland, a little bit of it's in village. What happens to somebody's land that falls into a bunch of different districts?
If the development was in village, they'd be entitled to village standards. If the development's rural residential, they'd be entitled to that.
So they can have three different sets of rules going on one piece of property?
They could.
Okay. Because it looks like a little tiny sliver of my land is in shoreland. But that doesn't turn everything into shoreland.
You're right, here, right. And even that, from this point to this point, development is still allowed, but there are limitations on how much, 10%.
And there's limitations to how much you can clear?
Yeah. And again, this, our rigs have it so that these buffers go across public roads. And the public road in this case.
I see another question there. There's part of that green. There's part of that green that surrounds number ten pond, that does not drain into number ten pond, the, the, the northern section of my land? Um, yeah.
What about it?
Yeah, the, the part that's green, right, right, it's just above that.
Yeah.
Can go, that section there does not drain into the pond, it drains downhill. Right, that, that line, the new property line that you guys put in, that's where that big line of rocks are?
Yeah, right there.
And that's the highland.
Yeah.
So I guess I don't think that that part of my land should be considered shoreline.
Well, for what it's worth, the state of Vermont does. It's in the shoreline protection area. Right now, the, I don't think the...
They don't have anything to do with drainage in the shoreline.
It's not, no.
But that's ridiculous.
We've got the same thing around Curtis. And, and at the bottom of that, man, all these villages were built at the bottom of ponds where the dams were.
'Cause that's the thing.
So, in almost every case, that's where you're gonna find the existing concentrated growth.
The power and the law.
And the part of shoreline, it, my understanding of what the state wanted in doing shoreline had nothing to do with where the water drained. It's a matter of protecting the whole area around all of the lake in terms of keeping the habitat and the vegetative and the flora and the fauna.
But it's already just lawn, so there's no, there's no vegetation to protect there, 'cause it's just lawn.
Um, well, that's, there's some grandfathered thing about just lawn. We allow it, but, um, because people have kept, been mowing. We don't necessarily like it.
Who's we?
The state.
Well...
You mean, you know, that, that dark green area is considered a no-mow zone.
Yeah, well, light green is what I'm talking about.
And the light green, you know, it's, there's certain vegetative management practices that would be nice, but we don't need to apply for permit.
Well, I'm considering that, like, the mother of lawn, I mean, I don't know, I might see where I could put it.
Proposed regs, the shoreline buffer zone, it says you have to mow it at least once a year, or it goes back to, uh, you can't mow it anymore. That's what it says right here in number six. And, uh, what happens if somebody just doesn't want to go to camp for a year? And who's gonna be the lawn police for that? I just, I don't, I don't, I don't think that makes any sense.
Oh, trust me, Bill, we've got lawn police in Calis.
Well...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So can I ask about extending the buffer zone across the road, and what happens to keeping the roads clear for, you know, the edge of the roads? Um, you know, we have some narrow roads in Calis, so, and they need to, they need to be cut along the sides, or we're gonna have to... Thank God for low population density, we'll have more accidents, so...
Right, but...
So what, well, how does that impact it?
I guess, it doesn't, because the, the road, um, the road standards, as I understand it, has whatever it is that it can do on the right-of-way on each side of the road.
Okay, so the road standards supersede the shrod?
Yes, and then, if there's a, let's say I've got twenty feet beyond the right-of-way of the road that goes into my personal line, and it's still within the two-hundred-and-fifty feet of shrod, that twenty feet is kind of shrod. I mean, just to protect it a little, I guess.
I know there's not much we can do about it, I'm just curious about whether or not the state has ever said, or has any plan at all to manage the roads, or remove sections of roads, to, I know, I recognize all the point of all of this work is to preserve the bodies of water, but by far, the, the, the most impervious surface by square footage, I mean enormously, is the roads themselves.
Yes.
They're, they're, I, I think, fair to say they're dealing with it right now, they're probably being dealing with it now.
Are they, do they have some kind of ditching plan, or are they re-replanting?
Run off from the roads and the, 'cause all the attention now is to the, what is, what is a roadside ditch that adequately picks up sediment and stuff when it comes off the roads, that's...
Well, sure, and some of these, like along Nelson and along number ten, I mean, it just, it just drops into the way, and the plowed lake goes by, and...
Oh, yeah.
The state is, has more regulations on, on the roads than they ever used to have with regard to, um, making sure that you don't have drainage into the streams, that drain into the ponds, that drain into the lakes, or plenty of all that stuff, so...
I realize, really, too, it's really tricky, I mean, if you look at something like that one along Nelson, it really isn't going to quit that. I mean, it goes straight up to two hundred feet.
We have the same issue on some of the roads by Bliss Pond.
Yeah, sure.
And, um, yeah, we, we have a lot of road issues like that in Calis.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any answer, I'm just curious if the state...
Well, there's a lot more coming, too, in terms of the state's groundwater permit, right?
Right, yeah.
Municipal roads, yeah, it's on the horizon.
Municipal roads, general program.
Or even just best practice in terms of, from which direction.
We give us a conditional use permit to use our roads. The state lets us conditionally use our roads, and we have to pay a fine.
So I just want to clarify, if the, since the road standards supersede the shrod anyway, how much are you really gaining by extending the overlay district across the road?
Good question, I don't know if you know that.
And it constitutes a taking of somebody else's rights.
I was gonna say, what is, what is the, what is the objective?
It does.
Absolutely. What is the objective? 'Cause we really shouldn't be increasing regulations without a specific problem that we're trying to solve.
It came up, a specific, a specific portion of this came up at Bliss Pond, where we were told that surface water runoff from Stereino's property was going right into Bliss Pond, and that surface water runoff could be in part intercepted if the vegetative buffer extended across the road and picked up some of that. That was, that was one point I remember.
So we beat everybody with the same stick?
I was just gonna say, yeah, so, so the solution isn't to address that one problem? It's instead to, to like...
How can one in running a town say only one person can, has to do it one way, and everybody else is free, so...
Only one person has the problem?
But I think there's more problems than that than we know. I think we were told about that, but I, I, I can, you know, if I were to drive up the road into, by number ten, and see how many things are running off that, off the land there, across the road, down into the lake? There's a lot. And, and, uh...
I don't agree with you, 'cause the road's right in the way.
Right, but, but it's going across the road and into the lake. So if there's a stoppage somewhere at the road that will stop it from going from the road into the lake, that's what we're hoping for.
But there's no ditching, you know...
Water does run down.
Well, I know, but then you, then if, if the road standards go in and they start doing ditching on that other side, and you start building some kind of ground cover so that that starts absorbing the water going in before it goes into the ditch, then you've stopped the water from going across the road and into the lake. That's my understanding of what they want to try to do.
Sounds reasonable to me, I mean, we have to protect our lakes. It's really important to protect our lakes, and they're already facing enough other problems. If it's a matter of planting some vegetation, I don't see what the big deal is, really.
I've been monitoring Woodbury Lake for forty years with readings, and it is so interesting to see we get nice seedy death screenings of southern, six and a half, which is deep, it's a good lake. And then there'll be a gully washer, one meter.
Let's just stop the rain.
Not, well, the other problem is the roads are getting higher all the time.
Oh, yeah.
There's no doubt, I mean, where, where we are, it has, what, over the last...
Over the last dozen years, the road around Nelson Pond has gone up by about eighteen inches, almost two feet higher than it was a dozen years ago.
I mean, so it's...
And it's a, and it's a solid six feet higher than it was fifty years ago.
Right.
Dealing with it at the town hall, the road.
Yeah.
There was a four-foot...
Right, yeah. We just keep putting surface on it and adding and adding, which increases the problem.
The problem, 'cause they're mostly fons. It's not gravel, it's sand, it's, yeah.
Stuff that likes to runoff.
Right.
What lake is this, John?
There's not very many places on that shore, you know? There's one there, if somebody wants to buy a place, it's just kind of available for eight-hundred thousand.
Is that all?
It's a nice place.
In, in Woodbury or Calis?
It's in Calis.
Really?
In Calis?
Yeah.
On what side of, what side of the pond?
John Harding's place.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Eight-hundred...
Well, seven ninety-nine.
That'll hurt our CLA.
Yeah. It's a big place, though.
You have to think of everything, you know? Okay, so, I'm trying to distill some of the things that I've heard, um, a lot of questions about why we are extending over the road and not being and following the state and stopping at the road. What other issues?
The lawn business.
Lawn, okay, yeah, the, um, the lawn and the mo- okay, what, that item number six you mentioned?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is the state's standard essentially the same for that?
There's no standard for that.
No.
One of them increases size.
There's always been something that, that, that Calis has had.
But what about the, the hundred-foot...
The hundred-foot buffer is considered no-mow. That is, it's a state, yeah.
Okay.
But that's a buffer as a buffer, but I think this is something that relates to something else.
Okay.
That if, if you have been, if you've been mowing up there, you know, we try to, and we're saying, if you don't mow there in a year, then it, then you're gonna have to revert to vegetated practices.
Me, it's sort of in the light green area, right?
No, and even in the buffer, we've got people that mow, they, they have a, they have a thing in the buffer, and they mow up to the state.
Right, but you said the state also has the same standard in the buffer, right?
They have a no-mow buffer, yeah.
Per- period.
Ours is somewhat grandfathered, if you've, if you've been mowing it, then you can, but if you don't do it for a year, then you can't.
Right, and then, and...
No, that, that's proposed.
Right, that's proposed.
That's not what's the law now, and I'm saying that propose that is crazy, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't agree with that. People don't come to camp for a year, and all of a sudden they can't mow their lawn anymore? That doesn't make any sense to me, I'm sorry. People go away, people have deaths in the family.
You might be interested to know that in Maine, the realtors did some numbers on shoreline, and the people that were mowing down to the shore, twenty percent less than people that were doing the shorewise, like the state is saying.
Twenty percent less what?
Selling price. They sold for less. Maybe it has something to do with all the geese on the lawn.
Say that again, if you, if you were mowing, you were, your, your property was less...
Your property sold for less. State of Maine. And they've had this rate for a long time. They've paid it for forty years.
Now, I'd say, we do not mow to the edge, we don't do it, we don't have grass to the edge. But I think if somebody has that, they should be able to keep doing it, whether they're gone for, gone for a year or gone for two years. Why should they lose their rights because they're not there at their own property? That's all I have to say about it, I just don't think it's right.
Jamie, have you ever asked anybody at the state if they're stocking their road based on legal?
I've never asked, but John...
Oh, I got a feeling that when they were starting to look at, uh, at the shoreline protection act, as it affects properties around Lake Champlain and that area, I think that's probably when they ran into the road, then people going nuts. I think it's a concession to, to, for us in that part of the state.
So I, I don't know why they did, I, all I know is that since then, they have started adding stricter standards to the roads in order to affect the runoff that's going in, so that they're slowly trying to correct what they didn't do right the first time.
So I have a question, going back to the North Calis Village, there's two things that have been said that are conflicting. I was, you told me that the state standards mean that it has to be, the light green has to be shoreline, but the state standards stop at the road, so that's not true.
Public roads.
Public roads, yeah.
Well, GIR road, it's class four road, it's public road.
That's, that's actually a big question.
Well, whatever, but there were some, there were some parts of it, so that, that needs to get sorted out.
Well, ownership of GIR road, I agree with you, but right now, we've found no evidence that it's a town road. Uh, the Lister's have found no evidence.
Yeah.
And I know that, I know that the people strongly feel that it is a town road. And that's, we, the Lister's looked, and we finally stopped at a point, and we couldn't find any evidence that it belonged to the town. We did find evidence that it was meant to access Memorial Hall for the purposes of people visiting that hall that are in, such people remembering the Civil War. But, uh, that's the whole reason the road was there, was to access Memorial Hall.
But you do have road on there that's town road, that's now in the overlay that wouldn't be, right? 'Cause that's number ten pond, right?
Here's, here's a public road right here.
Yeah.
So you can see that the state stops right at the edge of this road, and basically right at the water's edge here. And this is North Calis Road.
And the state stopped there.
So it stopped, stopped right along North Calis Road.
So how far across from Hillon is that?
Sorry.
What you're saying under the new, new chain, is that it would no longer...
At that, at that point there.
It would no longer stop.
Right, if we... You had, you had one that showed, uh, what the state was...
Yeah, I was looking for it on this, I don't know if I have the state on this.
But it would stop at those public roads? And so that's the question, is whether people feel pro or con on that? Whether it should track the state, then stop at the public roads, or...
Okay, here, I'll turn on the state.
So, that's where the state is.
There's the state.
That's the state shoreline.
And then not on the other side of number ten because it's a road.
That's a public road.
So you have no permission at all of it?
Same thing with Nelson.
And there's Nelson Pond.
So it stops at there.
So that's the state shoreline regulation as it is stated today.
Yeah, unless the state comes down, and like you were saying, they're looking at, uh, at someone's right-of-way, treating that as a public road, they come out with, with something definite.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, John, 'cause he's got... Okay, I'm sorry, John, did you say anything?
Well, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Bob Martin.
Oh, Bob.
Yeah, um, you said that the state Supreme Court is looking at a private, private road.
Federal Supreme Court decision, I think, the attorney was the way he was talking.
So if they decide that a private road is a public road, then, then that changes this whole thing as far as the shoreline protection act goes.
But, but actually, the shoreline covers private roads on the state. What we're showing here, we have, these are class four and class three roads, which are public roads.
Yeah, I know, but if a court says that those class four roads and private roads are quote "public roads", that changes the whole shape of the state shoreline protection.
I don't, I don't think he's gonna get away with it.
I hope not.
Can you zoom out on North Calis from the, on the North Calis Village, with the, with the current state?
Down here?
Yeah.
What parcel, why, why is that?
Why is that red?
Just...
'Cause I clicked on someone's parcel.
Oh.
Clicked on someone else there.
I would say with the small representation of the town that we have here and at any meeting, um, what needs to happen is, and I know it's an expense, but an informational, um, handout, we've sent to every taxpayer with, um, concerns for our lakes, with the state guidelines outlined, and the proposed town, um, guidelines, and to discuss getting the vegetation that's needed, we would need, um, you know, natural plants for this area, to the lakeshore, that would be beneficial to the wildlife and to even the landowners, if there could be berries or something picked, and make a fund and provide this. I mean, not everyone is going to be able to afford this vegetation. I think it's a matter of, of having people understand that it's not about taking property rights away, and I don't think the town needs to take possession of a certain, you know, amount of land in front of someone's property. But it's a matter of getting this vegetation, getting the information out that this is what we're trying to do, and showing the advantages of having this vegetation, and the advantages of not mowing, encourage not mowing, I think we've already done that. But, um, to make it very clear that no one is trying to take anyone's property, the town is not trying to advance on anyone's property, we're all very sensitive about our property, it's our property, we're already encroached on so much. But it is very important, what you're talking about... important what you're talking about here. So, I would think that that would be a good way to approach it, is to get the natural vegetation. I have talked to Doug Guy, who's Fantastic Garden, probably all know him, and he has talked about many plants that could be placed on the shoreline. I saw in that huge rainstorm last year, I saw a lot of stuff going into lake because of a landowner near, in the camps over there, decided that he would go down there and weed whack the whole shoreline. Well, before that, I saw that grass and all holding back the rain. I, I witnessed it personally. That grass was holding back the rain from going over the edge. Once he weed whacked that, right down it went, right down, made a nice little river, right down into water, and I saw the erosion out in the water as well, and it went quite a ways out, and I wasn't happy to see that. So, the weed whacking really made a big difference. Vegetation, just let the natural vegetation grow along the shoreline, plant some more if necessary, that would be a, you know, benefit to the wildlife, to the birds, and, you know, all the pollinators that we have, the bats, and...
If I could not go with Tammy said, I would, I would prefer to have encouragement than, than more rules and laws.
I think the vast majority of people who own property around lakes care about it.
Right.
I don't think anyone is intentionally being malicious, there may be a little bit of ignorance out there, but that's changing. So, I kind of, I'm a party says, why, why burden people who already care about, about the lakes, I mean, if education is best practice? And furthermore, I think at some point, you gotta think about tax revenue, I hate to put it in those terms, but, you know, the more we restrict the rights of lakefront owners, the less they're gonna wanna own that lakefront, I mean...
So, you're saying that with our mowing, we're, we're in effect, that mowing thing is restricting?
No, I, I'm not merely referring to the mowing. I think, I think that, that, just as a general nod, most of them, I don't think are, are intentionally trying to do anything malicious, and I actually think if you, the amount of lawn that is around those, at least at least some of them, there really isn't a whole lot.
No, I think it's...
So, I'd rather see education than legislation.
Right, it's, it's, it is education, we, we understand that. And I break the corner of the word encourage, but I am told that we can't use the word encourage in regulations. So, in other words, regulations are a shell or a may, and so...
But going out to two hundred and fifty feet from the water's edge really does swallow up a lot of, and maybe that's the point.
Well, remember, the no mow zone is the hundred feet, and we're just, the, the hundred and fifty feet, you can do a lot there. You've got, you can clear up to forty percent. You can have other things going on, where the biggest concern is, is the hundred foot buffer area. And that's where we have seen where people have been mowing in that buffer, like Tammy said, the guy that killed off everything and then went, so it's the buffer area that's our main concern.
That's the dark green area.
The dark green, yes.
I, I'm a big fan of encouraging folks to do that, and on the Lakes and Streams Committee, I, I hope some of you recall seeing, in prior years, we, twice a year, would send a newsletter to folks about things involving the quality of the lakes, in the streams, and with specific regard to Nelson Pond, and number ten pond, and I think Curtis Pond, we had prepared a best practices flyer, and the hope was that, that the landowners themselves would, would, you know, take it on board, and if they rented the property, that they would post it so that renters would, would understand what is a bad thing to do on the property. I, I hope that had some positive impact, but, you know, probably, you know these places better than I do, certainly up in this part of the town, I don't know whether it's changed anybody's mowing practices or anything.
No, I think some, this guy that's weed whacked, I think that he is like, there's the ignorance, but there's also the willfulness, like despite anybody, he would, he would weed whack it, so people like that, you just get a collar, a chain, you know, a heavy chain, just hook him up, and drag him behind his car, no.
It seems like the road issue, which, which is a, a big one that we're just looking at again, since the town already has the rights to do ditching along the sides of the road, right, which is, which are worried about in front of, and already has the rights to do things with management of vegetation, I just don't see what you're really gaining other than limiting people's property rights by extending across the road. Because the town has the right already to do something on the other side, on both sides of the road, so...
To manage the drainage.
To manage the drainage, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And I just, I also want to say, I appreciate it, look, I mean, it's clear you guys have put so much time and research into this, which I appreciate, because, you know, clearly what you're interested in doing is trying to protect our lakes and streams, and, and I really, I do thank you. I, I do think your charge on the front, your first list of bullets, is tricky, because I think you have contradictory bullets, and so if your charge has conflict in it, I think that makes your job really hard. So, to say that you're going to bring us in line with the state, and then have another bullet that says we're gonna extend beyond the state, those are contradictory. And so, that's, that's tricky. I hear you, and that's what I'm saying.
We're bringing it in line with the state from what we have, with the exception that we're adding two other things, it's really the flow.
Forgive my ignorance, I, I just, I don't understand how the process works. So, this proposal that you're making, is it go to the select board or does it go to the voter?
Well, okay, this is just an information session right now.
All right, sure.
And we are working on other things, which are equally as problematic in some ways, which will happen, is then there will be a public hearing for all of the changes that we want to propose. This is simply one aspect of it, but we realized that it affected a lot of people that live by the lakes, so we were just providing this as information as a start. And if we hear something that we think we want to change, we can still make changes, because it's still in a draft.
Sure, but down the road, is it approved by the voters of Callas or the select board?
Yes, yes. It goes first to a public hearing from planning, it goes to the select board. They get to do whatever it is they want to do within a hundred and eighty days. If they approve it, then it goes to the public for voting.
We mainly try to do that at town meeting, so that it's all, everyone has the same...
And, and we've been working on this so long, some of us are really getting sick and tired of it. So, we'd like to, you know, we're hoping that we can get some, we, we wanna work on River Corridor, there's, that's the one thing we're working on, because we need to add River Corridor protection. We have some thought about storm management and erosion control, we, we're not sure whether we're, we're gonna go through, we're, we're still evaluating it. And then there's some general, what, stream, stream buffer, the whole issue of the streams, we have, we kinda have to rewrite it a little bit. So, I would like to have this voted on by next year, which means I, we need to have public hearings closer to the end of the year, you know, and, and, and so, but if we don't, we don't. I mean, my issue is, we would rather have quality than push for time.
Yeah, I would encourage that.
And this is a really important part of that process, to hear from people, and see what the town wants.
Isn't weed whacking the shoreline at Mirror Lake that's been being done, isn't that in the zone that needs to not be weed whacked already?
You're right.
It's got a history of being whacked.
The state.
So, if they were to apply for a permit, that permit would probably say you can't do that anymore.
What was it that John was just saying though?
Sorry.
The state has a clause in it about grandfathered weed whacking.
So, they're saying he can keep doing it if he thinks something down and doing that?
And I just want to say too, that the state Shoreline Protection, the state Shoreline Protection Act has been in place for about five years, and anyone who owns land on the pond should have a copy of, of those standards. They're easy to get, there's a lot of supplementary information about what makes a good planting, there's, there's gobs of stuff, mitigation strategies to, to control surface water runoff into the pond, there are tons of resources. So, so as far as the town informing citizens, we'll do our best to get this stuff out, but it's up to the property owners to have a handle on what the standards in the Shoreline Protection Act are.
And to add to that, we are looking at, when we format our, our regulations, if in fact, there is something that the state has out there that is, gives guidance, like what kind of plants and vegetation to have, we would put it in there as a hook, so that you could hook on it and, you know, click on it, and it would go to that form, and so we wanna be able to have an interactive document as much as possible.
Have you heard of the Federation of Lakes and Ponds? Very powerful, big organization.
Federation of Lakes and Ponds?
Yeah, Conservation Commission gave us the lead to it. We have it.
They've got it all, homeowners, national, species, the plant, and...
Well, the state of Vermont does too. If you look on, there, I have looked, and there's like a list of twenty documents that spell out everything and every which way, from streams and wetlands and, and lakes and what kind of vegetable, vegetables, vegetative management, my husband planted his tomato seeds, I guess that's what I think.
I have a question on the village thing, that four hundred feet.
Yeah.
I think traditionally, I mean, number ten pond is number ten pond, because the number ten schoolhouse was, I guess, somewhere out near where Fred's house is now. So, that would have traditionally been part of the, the village. So, the four hundred feet from North Callas Road seems like it truncates part of what probably used to be considered village.
I can't find any written documentation that told me how big the village district was, but it's clear for measuring, and the, what I'm seeing here is what's been in our zoning regulations since they established these districts. I was able to measure it, and it's consistently four hundred feet from North Callas Road, so I just extended that. You're suggesting that maybe it should also be...
Well, that, that works, well, south of the junction was number ten pond road.
What you're saying, maybe...
When you get up into the village itself, I would suggest a little more.
Which way, over here?
No, well, maybe over there, yeah, because certainly there's some houses up in there that are part of the village.
Okay, now, that's interesting. Anyone else feel strongly about expanding the village?
If you look at what is traditionally village, some of the houses up on the right-hand side there, and over at Fred Bushway.
Fred Bushway.
So, you're talking about to the east?
Right.
Both, east and west, sort of... Including a little, a little more, make the village, because it kinda gets skinny at that end.
Yeah, it's very skinny.
And that was really the center of the village, so it's kind of counterintuitive that the, the village is narrowest where the actual village was.
Well, Chris and Stephanie's house used to be the store.
Yeah, and that's not included in the village.
Yeah, their barn is, but not their...
Their barn is, because it's near...
Yeah, so I think it should be included, some on the right and some on the left, to make North Callas Village a little faster.
It's almost right up behind their house, too.
Oh, yeah.
So, you're saying to expand it?
Yeah, expand the, the North Callas Village a little bit.
To how far? You want it to go to the other road, where, what road would you like to see it go to?
Like Chris, Chris and Stephanie's, this, this part should probably village, there are houses in there, and maybe a little bit in here, because the old schoolhouse was somewhere in this area.
So, it's just a, a minor cosmetic addition?
Yeah, just to make it kind of fit. But having the, the building that used to be the store and the post office not in the village is, is really kind of ridiculous.
Yeah.
Could you show the whole pond?
I guess I'll go to the top of Foster now.
Okay.
Where, where's your house on there, Ben?
The little piece that has the, the stream in it.
Oh, okay, yeah, up further.
Up on the side of the pond.
Their property is...
Yeah, well, it's up, it's up further.
Up further, much further.
Yeah.
Go back.
It's way up.
What, who, who, who are we talking about?
Ben, Ben's place.
Oh, Ben.
Ben and Karen, Ben and Karen's.
What, you're up here?
No, make, show the whole pond.
Ben and Karen are up a little bit more.
There's the stream.
See the little stream that comes in?
There.
No? That was, that's his place.
That stream is, is to the right, where the house is facing, and behind there, there's a little beaver pond that arises and disintegrates every five or ten years.
At different points with the beavers and the weather.
Well, I don't have a, I don't have all, all this stuff on this one particular map, but I have a strong suspicion that when there's, when there's a stream that goes along and stops, and then starts again, I've got a feeling there's like a little wetland kind of thing.
Well, it probably goes under the road.
Oh, the road's right here. I think there's a...
There's a wetland in there.
Yeah, there's a wetland right there.
The beaver pond.
Turn the wetlands on.
I don't, I don't have wetlands on.
We don't have one this one? Ah, geez, okay. Then that gives them all the ideas of what we have to go through when we look at wetlands.
I've probably got it on another map.
There's an interesting delta at the end of that stream, illustrating some ways what happens when there's uncontrolled water going into a lake.
Yeah.
It spreads out quite a lot, and it's all mostly sand.
Yeah, because it's quite, it's quite, at that little stream, there's quite a delta that goes out into the pond.
Oh, yeah, there is.
I'm a little surprised.
Did you write by it probably to go after your...
Yeah, when I go to Beaver Dam breaks, everything's always, the delta gets great. There's blue irons, there's ducks. Yeah, right, that shows the delta, yeah.
With that extent, this is real.
Good question. Any more shoreline event?
Do all of you have an uncovered question? Did you have something else to say, Larry, or, oh, you were also...
Any other concerns? We've, we've written down the mowing, the road issues.
Extending the North Callas Village.
And extending the North Callas Village to make it prettier.
Well, more villagey.
More villagey, yeah.
How do you propose to enforce this?
The way we do it now.
Just by, through education and, and anger, anger neighbors?
That angry neighbors, that's pretty much it, really.
Yeah.
And people come in and ask for a permit, and I'll talk to them about it, and we'll go see what the regulations allow. Otherwise, there, there are, there are people who don't understand that there are limitations to what they can do in shoreline property, and they get found out when someone wraps them out.
I just had, it's just the way the system goes.
Right, unfortunately, that's the way it works.
There's no one out riding around.
Right, there's no, right, there's no zoning place.
No.
And so, yes.
Just had a permit where the people cut down, this is a one point three acre parcel for a new, a new place in the two hundred and fifty foot zone.
Oh, man.
They cut down almost every single tree, okay? Then Lindsey Miller showed up.
Was it from the state?
Was it from the state, and they got permission to cut the rest down. There's a big loophole, it's called a hazardous tree. Every tree's hazardous.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, okay, now, look, if you wanna give me your email address, and you wanna see the draft of the language, I can mail it to you with what we have, if, if you'd like to do that, and I can, I can email you.
Put a link on Front Row Forum or something?
There you go.
Put it on our website.
We could put it on the website, too. We could put it on the town's website. Yeah, actually...
That would be better for...
Yeah, yeah, because I noticed that East Montpelier does that. They put the drafts on the town website, and I'm going, oh, that's a pretty good idea.
I was looking for it, and I had to call John, he emailed it to me, but it'd be nice if it was on the town site.
Okay, we, we will put up a place that says what we're working on, so that you can look at what we're working on.
And some of the maps?
Can you ask him, say, can you link to some of the maps?
Oh, the maps.
The maps are making a link to the maps, can't you?
Or a screenshot.
On the website?
These maps are different than what we have on the interactive map on the website. The interactive map, I mean, this, the interactive map, actually on the website does have a lot of this, but what John has used is, you know, we play a lot of what if.
Well, but if you just, like a screenshot, it wouldn't have to be interactive for the user.
Yeah, I could do screenshots.
Pick the most probable things, do a screenshot, and then just say, hey, this is what we're looking at.
The contrast of the old and the new, the old and the...
And we know we'll have to do that for public hearings, you know?
Yeah.
But so, yeah, you're right, we should go out and put it on the website earlier.
This is amazing work you guys have done.
Yeah, it is.
Really.
It's a completely different crowd than, and we've done this now, pretty much, you have the third group, we, Curtis Pond people have attended meetings, then we went to Adamant.
And we did Adamant. I missed the Curtis. Well, they, they came at a, at one of our meetings.
Yeah.
And, tied with Conservation and Lakes and Streams, and a lot, so Curtis Pond was representative of that.
No, a lot of, a lot of landlords are out of state, out of town.
Right, right.
They're not even here.
They're not even here, you know?
Right.
That's right.
Not possible for them to hear.
Hear.
So are you saying we need to do this in the summertime when they're all here?
It would probably be a good thing just because, yeah.
Especially for Nelson Pond.
Give the town hall.
Yeah.
They do pay taxes.
Will can initiate the town hall.
Right, there you go.
They don't get to vote, but they do pay taxes, you know?
That's true. Is there any other thing? I think this is...
I'm just going to say something from my gut here, and that is, you know, our family owns most of the eastern side of Number Ten Pond and has for seven generations. And we've kept it the way it is because we wanted it that way. And the public reaped the benefit. But what goes up my you-know-what sideways, when people tell me what I can't do even though I'm already doing it. So that, you know, it just bothers me. Maybe that's the old Republican ending, but that's where I start to get a little upset. Our family has cut ice out of that lake, fence posts out of the cedar. You know, we made our living around it. We don't do that anymore because we're not dairy anymore. But it's property rights and it's how people feel. And I think you need to take that into account, changing buffers and changing rules just because you think you need to. The state already has rules and I've been through them to change it can't. And I found it not too onerous. But to have to go to the state and then to the town, then to the DRB, kiss the ring, it gets to be a little bit much. That's where I have a problem.
Well, it wouldn't affect anything on Nelson, Foster Homestead at Nelson. That's ours and the state's.
I'm speaking for me and I'm speaking for people who are on the other side, who are on the other side of that road that, you know.
Well, Bill...
And my cousin Peter, who also is going to get affected now because you're going to cross the road there.
And I'm not saying this to be argumentative, I'm trying to understand.
And you got to remember, 75 years ago, there was no precinct.
Right.
None, zero.
You could look right down the lake from Foster Homestead.
Right.
A lot of sheep.
Yeah, right. I mean, you could walk all the way from Kent's Corner to Nelson Pond.
No tree.
Like that, it was open. And these ponds are beautiful and they're healthy and we've been treasuring them and caring for them.
We're not saying you haven't. We're just saying that we're just making our buffer equal the state's, that's all.
Well, then you don't need to do it. If the state has it, then you don't need to do it. It's redundant.
But we have to find a way, when somebody says they want to build something, we want to know that it's within our guidelines as well.
But you're extending them beyond the state. I think that's probably what, how we feel. I think that's what Bill is saying.
In the two areas relative to the road and impervious surface, those were the two areas that we differ. So I'm hearing you object to that, okay.
For what it's worth, we've got a 50-foot no-mow buffer right now in our current regs and that already crosses public roads at where the road is closest. So we already in effect have zoning that crosses the roads and technically should would tell a person we can't cut. I don't know how big the swath would be. Mine would be 5 BY, but we've cut that stuff already.
But there's a loophole, so no one can stop someone from weed whacking the shoreline near a lake.
No, it's a grandfather law. I don't know if you call it a loophole.
He just said it's a loophole in the state law.
And would you clarify the definition of a public road to...
We can't do that.
No, but find out what the state really means by what it was.
A public road by this, we have, a public road is class one through four. Anything that's listed as private is private.
Okay.
So along Curtis Pond, those are private roads.
Okay, I guess I was confused by what he was talking about, that Florida thing, you know, what's, I guess that confused me.
The road at Woodbury Lake is a private road as well.
Right.
Now, what's the... You also have to consider, you know, safety of property damage. You have to allow for some way for somebody to get permission to remove, you know, I'm just thinking of the root trees or something that could potentially fall and they can't fall.
That language is in the state.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
You should read the state guide, they're pretty, pretty easy to read. Yeah, I've read them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Send the emails. Thank you, Rob.